Said, we're gonna start this meeting with reviewing what we know. We had G E I working on a stabilization project for, since two thousand and fifteen, they were engaged with us. Two thousand and eighteen, they started getting preliminary plans together. They made a formal submission to D E C. Originally, we wanted a twenty-foot steel wall. We went back and forth with the D E C, as everybody knows here, for years. And we finally got a permit, I think it was April, and the Army Corps of Engineers came in September thereafter. Only then could we put this out to bid to get pricing. We had sixteen, I'm sorry, fourteen bidders. Low bidder is Terry Contracting at four point eight million. They're holding the steel or the price of the steel for this job until March fifteenth. Thereafter, you know, we lose that hold on the pricing and in Joe's conversation with Terry Contracting yesterday, the price of steel has already gone up. It will take them two months to get the steel. And it's the timeline of the project from start to finish, they, according to their bid, calls for approximately eight months from start to finish. They did say that if they were awarded the contract, they could start probably within sixty days. They would leave a portion of the easterly beach open for the village to use. But that project would go through probably it to the new year. And they also said the best time to plant is the fall, because that is the, the time that the types of grasses and everything take. Otherwise, if you plant in spring or summer, there's less likelihood that the fauna and vegetation will, you know, survive. That's in writing from Bob Terry in an email yesterday, because I wanted to try and understand, you know, timelines. So, what we don't know is, you know, at this point where we have, what we don't know is where we go from there. And let's look at the upland, proposed plan. Let me just, let me just say that we have applied for FEMA funding on the lower tow project. We were denied. We have an appeal in to FEMA. In the meantime, that same group, which Joe and I had a conference phone call with last week where I basically lost my mind. They are saying that they are making a separate application due by, Joe, is it May first or April first?
It's, it's that timeline is going to be extended to June, to, I think, June, June first. It's not official yet, but that's my understanding.
And that application will be a separate application for the upper wall, because that is hazard mitigation money that FEMA has available. So they feel the upper, upper wall project is much more suitable for hazard mitigation, because it's preventing the loss of further erosion at the top and loss of the assets at the top of the hill. If we blend the two programs together, it's likely that we will be denied, because the problem with the lower bluff project and its application FEMA, they see this has been an ongoing problem. It is not a one-time occurrence from one huge impact storm, like the drainage basin. By the way, just put that on the back burner, the drainage basin project, you know, they're making us go through the wringer, folks, for this funding. It is not an easy, you're spending hundreds of hours on the phone with these applicants, Denise and Joe, and so, so let's look at the upper wall proposal. When we spoke to G E I, I guess it was about a month ago. They had a preliminary plan. Can we go to another document, please?
Well, the plans are in, in what you just had up. Oh, here's, this is the one pager showing the, the wall and the blowing.
Okay, so you see the upper wall, the squiggly line. And you'll see there are a couple of, you know, there's the, the U shape that encapsulates the building, then there are the two sides. On the easterly side, it cuts back into quartz five and six. And that's gonna kind of, you'll see when we go to the topography map, which we just got last week, you'll see how that's gonna tie in to protect that whole slope that goes down to the roadside. And then you'll see on the, I'm sorry, on the westerly side, you'll see that there's that fanning or, or even piece to protect, you know, assets where quartz one and four are. Now, those two pieces can be add-on pieces. They do not necessar, we don't necessarily have to go for this entire spread right now. It can be just a U shape, and as time goes on, or whatever, you can actually enhance that steel wall. So we had asked them to give us, I think it was a pricing, Joe, for just a U shape, correct?
Yes.
And using the, the, the unit pricing from the lowest bidder, the U shape came in approximately three-two, three-point-two?
Somewhere around there, yes.
Okay, so, so let's, you know, of course, the concern with, you know, look at that line of that wall in its proximity to the bluff, and that's coastal erosion, that sea ha dash line, that's the sea ha line, folks, that dash line. So, you know, if we lose any more material, you know, that we get closer and closer to that line. We have submitted to the D E C the letter of non-jurisdiction, saying, listen, this is, we're looking at doing this project to stabilize the loss of this building. We wanna make sure that this is not your jurisdiction, because if anything, if we ever, if we do, if we move ahead and do this, we don't want the D E C coming along and, and stopping that project midway. I'm just telling you guys where we, where we are, and then we can talk a lot more. In November, this board voted five-zero to, to go for bond of ten million dollars. A public, public referendum has come and gone, because the public had an opportunity after that vote was taken. Permissive referendum requires, you know, a submission of petitions, three hundred votes to force us to go to public. So you have, we have the authorization to move forward if we deem that this is enough of an emergency to act. This board will decide. The treasurer's office, we've been working with, has worked with bond counsel, Brian Egan's been working with bond counsel. We've, we know the pricing for the ten million dollar bond would be a six hundred and forty thousand.
Eight hundred and forty with interest for fifteen years, and then five hundred and forty to five hundred and seventy for the thirty.
So we, I met with Colombo and Assemblyman Engelbreit, telling him that we were in, we were, there was a possibility that this community was going for this bond, and that would they support us if we requested for the thirty-year amortization period. They both said yes, so that letter has been submitted, because that would require legislative relief. The way I envision this working for us is doing, is approving, this is my recommendation, and we can talk after this, because this is what I'm gonna, I propose doing the lower toe wall immediately. I then propose, and the engineers, basically when we had them on our meeting, we asked about timelines. If we do nothing, we will lose the building in less than four years. We'll, we may get four years out of the building. If we only do the toe line, maybe we get seven years out of the building. And these are right from versions, I mean, I could, you could go back and listen to that meeting, right? If we do both, he said there's a strong possibility we could get upwards of thirty-five years out of the building. You know, so I, my recommendation is to do the lower wall immediately, get it done, and that gives us time to focus on what we wanna do on the upland portion, knowing that we would go for the second phase of this to stabilize the building, and then look at further drainage, recreational amenities, and I think this year we could probably install four pickleball courts on quartz one through four and get a pickleball program going where it belongs at the country club, because if they play pickleball at Texaco Court, where are they gonna go to the bathroom? That's gonna be our next headache. Can you do this? Can you do that? Can you do this? And we can also probably get quartz sixes, uh, seven and eight open for the season, and give our residents a recreational facility and access to a clubhouse that they are entitled and have access to right now. The, I met with the principal of T P G, it was the Monday after the snowstorm that we had to manage. And, uh, he assured me that T P G is committed to this facility, that they have not made any changes up there, because in the middle of COVID and taking over a contract, they don't really make a lot of changes. They try and get to know the nature of the animal. He told me in that meeting that they were focusing a lot more on Danfords, because Danfords has a lot of damage right now, that they have to physically repair this building that's kind of falling apart around them. But I said, listen, if we go for bond, you know, my community is gonna be paying for this, and we need you to make that facility a resident-friendly facility that caters to the residents and the members. He totally understood. He said he was committed to working with us. That contract, Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, expires at May thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. So, after twenty twenty-seven, you guys can take back the building and do what you want with it. You know, we're not withholding to a vendor after that time period, and but if we lose the building and we lose the vendor, we lose two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in revenue, and which would be just another hole that has to be filled some, in some other way. Now, we, we haven't even had our budget workshop, folks, because most of the time has been spent on this project. We have some other budget challenges, but I have solutions for them, and I will wanna be talking to that, about those in a separate work session. Because these types of challenges are going to be, you know, confronting us. I've been meeting with several different granting agencies. I know, you know, Rebecca brought a, a granting agency to the table. We're getting kind of bombarded with these granting agencies right now, because there is a lot of infrastructure money out there for coastal erosion mitigation, flood mitigation. We've done a lot of homework, and, you know, that's in the downtown business district here with the flood studies and everything else. But this is, this is something that needs either, i- i- it's gonna need an immediate decision from this board. I'd like to move to the topographical survey, if we could, because I know there's been a lot of questions about drainage. And why can't we, what do we know about drainage? And I'm gonna kind of pass the baton to Joe, because you've been working with Steve Ursulini.
This one?
Ursulini? I think so.
Do you have the image that I just sent you this morning?
They're right there, all four.
That's the one?
Four, so which one do you want?
Okay, there we go.
So I'll, I'll just lead them in. So this survey shows the car, more, more or less the currents. And the reason why it took a little longer is you see a lot of different colored lines. You know, so the surveyor has marked out all the utilities, electrical lines, water lines, other, other types of service lines. So you'll see that there's a lot of interconnects with electric to the quartz and the clubhouse and water, etc. The interesting thing about the, the clubhouse road is you'll see that that kind of light bluish line, that's water. It actually goes down both sides, which we found interesting. But you'll see, you'll see also the corner there by quartz six. If you could just move a little north on the map. Nope, not too many, move, move it north. And zoom back out a little bit, Kevin, thank you. I don't know what happened to the color. Kind of like dimmed. There you go, thanks. You'll see we have a my, my pain comes in waves. You'll see at the corner of quartz six, we have a, a serious situation. It's just not a matter of putting up sandbags, folks, that the sandbags will probably go over and only exacerbate erosion at this point. So we, we, Joe, talk to me about what, where you are with Joe, I mean, Steve and P W Grosser or Mollsmacher.
So we're hopeful that we're going to have this survey finalized in the next day or two, and receive that Bob Brown, who is performing the services related to the survey, had provided us with this temporary image for providing to a Holesmacher for their work on designing a drainage plan. I spoke to Steve Ursulini yesterday. He is hopeful that he will have a plan to us by Wednesday of next week, if not sooner, with a plan to install drainage on the, the western side of the building there. In order for them to effectively put in a trench drain, they will have to install it on the north side of the, the northern quartz there, towards the outer bounds on the court itself.
I'm sorry, Joe, what, which quarter do you talk about, P boy?
So it's probably going to be installed here.
Yeah.
Across here, connecting to the drainage system here, and then back into the drainage system in the lower court here.
Alright, so we, we knew we had to pull back quartz five and six. And so that it'll be like large drainage pools, catch bases, is that what they're?
Correct, and a trench drain going across.
To prevent it from going over, right. So we don't know what they're proposing, if anything, on the, on the west side, yet, correct?
Correct.
Well, that's, you know, that's why the, both projects have to be coordinated. That's why you can't, you know, that's why the upland, you know, we have to wait till we have all the information until I can decide about the upland, you know, so you can't finalize.
Definitely disrupt the drain. We've worked with Holtsmacher to figure out how to design around the steel wall.
The drain you said is a trench drain, so it's not like there's a pipe.
It's, so the only drainage that's there right now, you see those two black lines, two, two black dots at the base of the driveway? Can you zoom in a little bit for me? The two black dots to the right of the building. Those are your, that's the only drainage you have right now.
You know, some of those can be set there too. We have to wait for the final survey to come in.
Yeah. But you see, when the water cascades down that hill, you know, you know, if something's not done back there, it's just gonna, you know. Yeah.
And when you're talking about drainage and, and moving the quartz, does that mean picking up the quartz as they are now? Taking them all out and then starting over, at least the, the, the northern part? Or are you putting a drain right through it?
Yeah, five and six will have to be abandoned.
Abandoned, or are they, do they lift them up? Do they take off the surface?
Oh, they're gonna, they're gonna be, well, if the drainage happens, they're gonna be completely
All dug up, yeah.
Dug up, and there'll be new soil and vegetation, new plantings, create a proper, you know, vegetative buffer.
And pull the fence southern.
Yeah, the fence will come out. So, we had looked at, or talked with Steve about moving, you know, the four quartz to the south. And in, which, you know, if you do that, you're, if you look at, you know, the parking lot area, you have, you have the driveway that, can you not, can you go? Yeah. You see the driveway that goes from upward to lower? To the south of seven and eight? You know, you can't really move those quartz back, because you have a topographical, a, a difference in topo. You'd have to build a retaining wall to uphold, to uphold the quartz and get them away from the drainage area. But then you have impacts to the driveway that goes down to the lower parking lot. So I'm not really sure that we should be investing in moving the, you know, to, to trying to get four quartz back there. I think we should focus on having two quartz. And then when we get the survey, we can focus on the westerly side to enhance. And, and Kevin, if you can scroll down and over, please.
Wanna go to where, east or west?
Go to the west and focus on four, quartz one through four, and we're getting the rest of that survey to the west. Hopefully by the end of this week, but, you know, it takes a while to get these maps together.
Has there been any more discussion about the relationship between watering these clay tennis courts and super saturating the sand underneath, which, as the, as Rougeen said? In, in the engineer's report, he said that when the sand is super saturated, it will fluff off, you know, it becomes heavier, and, and so that is a, a significant factor in, in erosion. And so, you know, looking, and then this was mentioned at a meeting before, that that was possibly you know, one of the contributing causes is the fact that the tennis courts get watered twice a day. But multiple times a day. And so if that water is simply going through the quartz.
What tennis courts have been there for forty years? So I don't, I'm not really sure that, I mean, I, I, I can't answer that question. I'm not a geologist. I really don't know, but I mean.
I, I, it, it struck me in, in the report that, you know, the, the sand being, you know, we're, we're trying to drain water out of the, out of the area to save the sand from super saturating or having runoff. But I'm just looking at this, you know, this potential issue of continuing to saturate the, the sand with the activity on that.
So, seven and eight are pretty, you know, southerly from the, any real danger or sloping. I, I, you know, I, I can't answer that question, Rebecca, but I mean, if we do pickleball up at one through four, and I would imagine that, that you'd wanna see that happen anyway, if, even if we only have four years. The pickleball is asphalt, and all of the southerly, northerly parts of one through four are, will be, you know, churned up and planted, as we had, you know, proposed, and, you know, pull everything at least fifty feet away from that bluff from quartz one through four, and, you know, do more drainage there, like possibly a French drain and, you know, vegetate. But, you know, asphalt, I don't think is any better. You know what I mean, because
As far as, as far as the, the saturated sand? The runoff, right, I get, if for me to, to look at a, a semi-permeable surface, like clay quartz, which the, some water does go through intentionally, keeping them, them moist, as opposed to asphalt where you can control slight pitch and, and drain the water away.
Yeah, that's interesting, because you know, clay quartz are, there's gravel underneath them. It's not like they're, you know, they actually, hard truth is, it's a pretty pervious material. There is gravel base underneath it, so I ju, I just found it kind of hard to believe that the quartz are causing this. I mean, I just, you know, if anything, I felt like they were, they were preventing a lot of water to go over, and I understand what you're saying, it's just seeping through, but I, I think the sand is coming off and you know, I mean, in, in sheets instead of, you know, I don't know. Again, I'm not a geologist, so I can't answer that question.
Sure, yeah, I, I'm looking at this as many contributing factors to the erosion, you know, it's not, it's not just the quartz, it's not just sea level rise, it's not just increased rainfall, but they're all factors, you know, as we make the next step.
So, you know, so now we, that's what we know. I, you know. So, so let's talk about, if we don't agree to move forward, what are, what, what are options? I mean, I think that's what we have to explore as well, right? So, the options would be to wait till we have the, an agreement on a wall for above and how the drainage would work, you know. And we, you know, I, I'm not sure if Furusion at this point is in conversation with Steve, Joe, but we, he knew that we were working with another engineering firm to, for the drainage. And, you know, put, put both packages together and put them up to bid together. If we do that, we I don't know if we will be able to apply for FEMA funding.
That is correct. And I spoke to Department of Homeland Security, and they, I presented those different scenarios, whether we should go with an application for the, continue with the lower wall. They had indicated that because we are so far along, that FEMA funding, or with respect to this hazard mitigation, we, we would be ineligible. And just to continue with that, the upper wall project, they said was definitely a much better fit, and something that you may be eligible for funding for. And then packaging it to, they said, you know, obviously, it's the village's decision to make, but they believe that by doing so, it could create an issue in terms of eligibility for funding, because we're now coupling both projects, and we are so far along with phase one, which is the lower wall. So they suggested bifurcating the two. But we'll support whatever we decide.
Yeah, of course, but, uh, just, you know, and don't forget, if we do get FEMA funding, we still have to pay for the project upfront, and then we get reimbursed, you know, and the last time we did the seawall, relying on FEMA funding, it took them four years to pay us back, folks.
Right. It's only up to seventy-five percent.
Yeah, so, so options are to not do it, but then we, we would have to apply immediately for a modification to our permit to secure the roadway. You know, I don't think we could just go in and do part of the project. I don't know, we'd have to, if the intent is really just to secure the roadway, then we'd have to really make sure that that's what the design is intended for. Because I think if you armor up that groin, you wanna do so in a manner that doesn't, you know, prevent for further acceleration of, you know, a cutout or whatever. Either way, I believe that we're gonna need drainage mitigation at the top. You know, because otherwise you're, I don't, you know, you, you, right now, you're, you have a, a situation that's accelerating pretty quickly. And any other plan is really gonna be a, a plan that discusses, you know, the building not being in that location. I don't, you know, I, I, you know, that's, that's for something, that's for a lot, lot more discussion. But unfortunately, you know, we are not in a good place, and I don't like being in this place, trust me. It's not a place I wanna be in. But, you know, I think I harvest a lot of anger with the E C for taking so long to issue our permit. I know, but that's, that's, you know, that's water under the bridge at this point. This is, no pun intended, this is where we're at. It's not an easy decision, folks. If we did both, we could agree to an upland plan. I mean, you know, then, then there is, you know, putting it out, Joe, that the one thing I couldn't answer myself was if we, if we did it as a package of an A and a B, and put it out to bid as an A and a B. You know, can I then bifurcate, can I continue to work with FEMA on the bifurcation of the application for just be the upland? And put it out for, you know.
What I, what I would do in that situation is I would submit to FEMA just the budget and just the plans for the upper. And have the focus and concentrate just on the upper.
Right, but so, so if, if, if we, if this board decides to postpone it, postpone the bottom and put the two together and have the community at large vote for it in the upcoming election, because that's something else that's been discussed.
Right.
Then when the, when the community says yay or nay, then, then we put those out to bid, and we're looking probably at not getting a start till I don't even know, because you put out the bid, you award the contract, you gotta secure the materials, you're looking at a year, and
Right. Nine, probably nine months to a year. So I would take what we have existing for the upper wall design, submit that to FEMA in the next couple of weeks, and have that application in, and let them start their review.
Right.
And keep the, the lower wall out completely.
Right. How long is our bid good for with Terry? How long before that bid would be deemed stale and have to go back out?
I would have to ask Ryan, I would think that we, we can hold it. The question would be, how long are they willing to hold it? So we would lose the, the cost of material on the steel, and then any other material, which means they would have to provide new pricing, so we may have to go out to rebid if the prices change. But that's a question for Ryan.
We're holding until March fifteenth, they're holding.
They're holding the price on steel and everything else until March fifteenth, correct?
So that would be, our vote would be to award the bid. That would be the next, that's the decision that we're making.
Oh, I think we have, yeah, we, we have to come to terms with making that this, we will, we unfortunately, because otherwise, you know, we're going back, I, I imagine we're going back out to bid anyway. And then we have to decide whether we're just doing the lower and not the upper, we're doing both, I mean. Guys, have a, talk about it, I mean, you know.
Well, if we're gonna do the lower, I, with this information from, from G E I, that it only gets us another couple of years on the building, I think it, in my opinion, if we do the lower, we need to do the upper. I think it's all or nothing. Spending five million dollars to do the lower wall for two years in the, getting the building, or keeping the building and sustaining it, it doesn't make sense. So, in my opinion, it's both or, or not.
I, I, I agree. I think for me more, the question is, are we working, are we looking to save the catering hall portion of, of the upland, or are we looking beyond that and investing money in removing that building, building something on the south, you know, building up a little bit on the southern side of the roadway? You know, and investing your village funds or, you know, country club funds into that project, as opposed to trying to buy ourselves more time, essentially, you know, even up to thirty-five years for the building. To me, that doesn't seem like a very long time, when in the end, the village will have to remove that building, so I personally feel like we're kicking the can down the road for someone else to, to solve it. Uh, to, to solve it in the future, I mean, the, the income from that, from that building, two hundred forty thousand a year. Uh, times thirty-five years, I don't think it's getting close to paying for the wall.
No, but it's, you know, it's, it's still village income. I think, uh, to, I think it's very unfair to just call it a catering hall, that is a clubhouse building, it has a restaurant that's open to the public that the members are. Affiliated with, it's got the locker rooms for the membership, it's got the tennis pro shop, it's got, now, we put a fitness center in there, we put a comment room down there, you know, we've made. Over the last five years, we've put in hundred, everybody's put in hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's not millions of dollars in there, so. Um, you know, right now, it's, it's, it, the vendor that uses it is, um, yes, they, they, they use it as a catering hall. I, but there's also a restaurant, man, that, that serves the public.
Margaret, what is the, um, current value approximately?
Uh, I've spoken to a couple of different realtors, I don't have anything written, they're saying between twelve and fourteen million easily. For the value of that building right now.
We do the lower wall. It's five million. Go across the road and you start work on a new facility.
Okay, Stan, I.
Three, four, five years, whatever it's gonna take for that building on the other side. By that time, we have a new facility, I'm speaking from the standpoint of a country club, the members do not use that building. It's a problem, it's a problem.
Yeah, I, I know it's, I, I know it's a problem, but it's, it's not the building's fault. It's not the building's fault that they're not using it, it's the operators. You know, if, and if that's the case, because I know a lot of members that do use this restaurant.
That's not totally true, because there's such a separation between the, the country club golf course and that building.
Yeah, but you're.
Nobody uses the locker room because it's so far away from.
Well, you're talking about the golfers right now, cuz we did have a tennis program. And we hope to bring back a racket sport program.
Right.
So it's, it's, you're talking not from a holistic country club perspective, I think you're talking from a golfer's perspective right now.
No, there's, there's more to what I wanna say.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I agree with the concept of putting it's pickleball courts. I don't, uh, I think courts five, six, seven and eight, you, you would need to move them eighty feet. To maintain four courts, based upon how far that steel wall comes into that.
I have no interest in maintaining four courts there.
Okay.
I think that you're, 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 you're gonna disrupt your parking lot, your access road. And I don't think it's worth it when I'm trying to explore the Westerly side and see if more courts could go on the Westerly side away from the water. And that other side of the. You know, that's other side of the hill there, that's gonna be, uh, impacted if we don't do something. Um, to the, to the east of those courts. I, I, I just have to say, like, this is not about saving the tennis courts. Um, and I, so I can ask you, okay, so if we do the lower wall and it gives you time to explore, where is that other facility going?
There we go in the footprint where the pro shop and the turn is now. You increase the size of the footprint, you walk one story.
And that's gonna accommodate what? Uh, what's, what's gonna, what's gonna go in there?
Well, you would maintain a, uh, snack shop downstairs, pro shop downstairs. You have a full basement, which would be much larger than it is now. A move for our membership office, fitness center, so on, so forth. You go up one floor and you make kind of a formal dining area on the upper, upper floor.
Which could also be used as a, a smaller catering facility for, you know, uh, you know, fifty percent events as opposed to. Two hundred person events, you know, so that's still potential for village income.
You see, if we do the lower wall for five million, do the sidewall for a million, but I, million, million and a half. Spending six and a half million.
Speaking of kicking the can down the road. The bluff is gonna continue to deteriorate without the walls, at some point, it's gonna hit the new facility. You know, at what point is it no longer kicking the can, it's too far, it's too close, I mean, it's gonna keep going.
Right, I mean, my question to the engineer was, you know, do we, do we find that evening out point and unfortunately. Greatly due to climate change and then the fact that, uh, Long Island's aquifer doesn't get recharged and so we're also. Sort of sinking, so it's a one-two punch, um, there is no answer to that. Uh, are we, you know, I don't know if we're, uh, this has been an extreme slough and then we're kinda gonna even out a little. There's, there's, we could all take different guesses and maybe one of us would be right.
So we, if we, if we do, if we go ahead with the lower toe wall. It gives us time to figure out an upland plan that we can agree to, but the clock is ticking.
Yeah, it does, but I don't know what, what does it do, it, if we put the lower wall in, are we saving our beach?
Well, I think Virujan had said that, you know, uh. It's going to add, you know, we're, we're certainly not gonna lose more material that gets washed out, um. You know, I think the accretion of, you know, we, there's another, other issues that take sand away, um, you know, that we're still gonna have king tides to deal with. You know, I don't, I don't, I can say we won't lose more beach than we've already lost, but I don't know if I gain beach.
There's nowhere to gain beach from. Because of the, because of the harbor, sand is moving east to west, it's just an unfortunate.
Right, well, the way they be, the way they built, built the jetties. You know, the, the jetties extend, so Cedar Beach is gaining all the sand. You know, and it goes into the throat and the only way we get it back is if they dredge and maybe we look into, you know, dredging programs, but, uh.
Can I just, um, throw something out for all of you to think about as well? Uh, we already have a smaller, uh, piece of real estate behind the existing building. For the current contractor to operate if, um, the upper wall is to be installed. So if we do move forward with just the toe and wait, you know, a year, two years. To make a decision on the upper, we may lose some more real estate behind that facility. To the extent that it will become a lot more costly if this board or another board makes a decision to save that building. It may turn into a, a much more expensive project.
Because of the weight, you're, you're saying?
No, because it's twenty, right now, it's, it's right on that sea line and if it goes into, if it goes, if it goes closer than twenty-five feet to the bluff. We are now in DEC territory and wait till you get that permit again.
Right, and then it's gonna be very difficult for the contractor to, to operate behind that building if we're losing. Many more feet over the next one, two, three years.
I just, it just kinda just blows my mind that, for three and a half million. Investment to keep the building, we'd have to pay a million dollars to demo a building, number one, and how many more millions to build something further away? I, you know, just, I'm just trying to like figure out tho- that mathematics and how that gets paid for.
Well, and what are the, the costs, I, I know the building needs a new roof, um, you know, sort of the, looking at.
Wow, does the building need a new roof?
It's in the contract, we never, we never put it out.
I, I haven't heard about, that I have any leaks right now, do we have any leaks? Do you have any leaks on the building that I need a new roof?
Well, the lease was passed over to the new people and in that lease, we were supposed to put a new roof on that building.
Okay.
Been doing patchwork.
I understand, but I'm not gonna put a new roof on unless somebody's complaining that I need a new roof.
I, no, it's been quiet, so we leave it quiet.
Fixed, we have, like I said, we've made a lot of investments in, into that structure.
So I, just to throw a curveball in. What if we did all of it? In some sort of progression, what if we do the lower wall and the upper wall, which saves not only the facility and the bluff itself and the beach and the beach access. And then is something totally separate, if the golfers and the club members really truly want a new facility on the second floor of the turn. We can look at that as a separate project.
What's the square footage of that building?
Why does one have to be, you know, why does a new facility or whatever they wanna do with the turn have to be related to saving the bluff and the wall and?
Um, I'm talking about the turn, like, you know, the turn right now. You know, adding, you know, when you start putting a full kitchen into a facility. And you're gonna have to expand locker rooms and you're gonna have to, you know, get.
But if that, if that's something the membership wants to do, they can do that.
I, I hear what you're saying, Kathy, and it's, it's a good point that they're not directly related, I guess for me zooming out a little bit more. Um, I'm looking at, you know, the, the effects of sea level rise on this community in general. Um, our fire department gets flooded, I don't mean to, to distract from this conversation, but I'm, you know, looking at. Spending taxpayer money on bonds to do projects of, you know, and trying to look at the relative importance, um. And, you know, the, our, our fire department is crucial to this community, it got flooded how many feet, uh, in the last big rain, not just because of the rainfall, but the. Uh, it has an active springs, you know, there on the property and so, um, you know, for, for me, if we're gonna ask taxpayers to, to start. Taking bonds out, looking at projects like that, I, I would feel much more comfortable, um.
Well, so the fire district is a, is a single and separate entity, um, they get, they get, they get, they have different tax lines. Um, they have met with us, uh, they are pursuing different upland parcels right now. Um, we had a great meeting yesterday with another, uh, you know, person looking, you know, Allison introduced us to. Um, they think that that particular project of relocating the firehouse. Is something that could get, you know, big assistance from these big pots of money out there. Um, but that's a five to six year plan, you know, they gotta find and they gotta relocate somewhere else and build a building and then that becomes Crystal Lake again. There's no doubt in my mind that that's got something that's gonna happen, it's not just like one versus this one, it's, it's gonna be a comprehensive. Long-term approach to everything that we're doing, but you know, this is, you know, the country club has been, we all brag, it's one of the five crown jewels of Port Jefferson. And it used to be a, a lot about, a lot more than just a golf course, um. And, uh, you know, the facility, you know, has a lot of memories for a lot of people, it's open for people to have private parties or go to dinner or lunch and. So it is something that is accessible to, I don't know why they don't go there more, you can park there with no problem, it's a great view. Um, you know, we, we have some work with yet another operator. And in twenty twenty-seven, they go away and we can have the building back and you can do whatever you want with the building at that point, instead of building a new one, like I, you know.
Going back to what Kathy was referring to, the new building would be there as a replacement for the old building, it wouldn't be just for the. Membership of the country club.
But maybe it could be.
That's a big building, twenty thousand square feet? You're gonna put twenty thousand square feet?
No, why do we need twenty thousand square feet?
Well, you just said it would replace the old building, so.
We do away with the catering end of it, you can put a seven thousand square foot building up there for three hundred a foot, that's. On the high end of per square foot.
Um, I'm sorry, Stan, we just built a ten by ten emergency command center on a slab. And how much did that cost us, Joe?
Five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, prevailing wage. Why, why not?
Because I think that was too much money.
Well, why not to bid? Well, you understand, when a municipality builds something, that's what you have to do.
You're building a, a wooden clubhouse. Similar to something Shinnecock has, Maidstone has. Uh, the going rate for building a building like that is between two hundred and three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
I, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't agree with your pricing at all because just to redo a rocket ship bathroom is a hundred and twenty.
Draw those numbers out of the air.
What do you mean?
I'm not, they're not my numbers, they're numbers that are coming from contractors who do buildings.
Yeah, no, but they're, but they're private, in the private sector, contractors. There's everything you do in the private sector, you have to multiply by one and a half in the municipal sector. And, you know, you have to have all of your, you know, when you go out to bid, you have to have everything bootstrapped and suspended and you have to bid. And everything we do is one and a half times more expensive in the, in, in the municipal world, I mean, it's, it's just crazy, I'm just saying, like, you know. So, you can, you can, you know, come up with a schematic and just, it took me how many years to. Build the maintenance facility and the cold storage facility over there, I mean, I'm just saying, like, you know, these things are great ideas. That's a five to six year plan and you're gonna build consensus and you're gonna pay for it and, you know, uh, like I said, I will. That will be solely paid for by the membership. I don't, why should the village pay for that at, at this point, you know what I mean, like, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I'm being the devil's advocate right now. We're having trouble saving this facility cuz the residents don't feel like they should save this facility. So that's gonna be solely borne by the membership and your membership goes up and down and wanes and.
Membership did not buy the country club.
I'm not saying it did, but.
The village bought the country club. The membership paid for those maintenance buildings, the village didn't put a nickel into it.
But as they should.
They really should.
As the, as the membership should. I understand that, Stan, I'm not, I, I understand that and I'm, that's why the village would pay for. You know, salvaging this facility right now, and if they don't see that, it's their clubhouse, I can't make them see that. But if you're talking about building a new facility on the golf course, to, you know, for a new restaurant and. I, I just don't know if, if the residents will support that, they're not supporting this.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem too, if you put that out for referendum.
That's why I don't think it's the same issue, I think that's a separate issue. Uh, I think building a new clubhouse for whatever use, whether it's public or it's golfers or it's tennis or. Who knows, whatever it might be, I think that's a totally separate issue.
I think the, the connection between the two is the question of the value of this building to our residents. And to our village as far as, do, you know, do the residents use it, uh, do the club members use it, both tennis and golf, do. Uh, does it bring in enough income to, uh, to offset the, the costs that we'll be putting in over the next, you know. Up to thirty, thirty-five years until we have to either build a new wall or take the building down.
But, you know, so, you know, nobody anticipated COVID. Nobody anticipated, you know, the catering industry taking a dive, I don't know, four or five years ago. Um, you know, so, you know, is the building being used at, at, for its highest and best purpose right now? Absolutely not. I will agree with that one hundred percent, um, do changes have to be made there? Yes, but there's a, we have a contract. I just can't like go and, I've done this five times with a party and then the crest and that. You know, it's, it's still a beautiful facility that we, we can get back in twenty twenty-seven and make it our own, instead of building a new one.
But what would we do with it?
What would we do with it?
Well, you, you, you said, you know, twenty twenty-seven, we can make it our own.
Well, what, what, the building that you're gonna build across the street, what are we gonna do with that one?
So, in my mind, that's in place of.
Right, so what are we gonna do with that? We're gonna have a restaurant and we're gonna have what?
No catering.
And, you know.
The village runs the, the restaurant.
The village is gonna run the restaurant, civil service, employees and.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can't even get people to work behind, to work for the, you know, as golf cart attendants half the time. I don't know, guys, I just, I just think this is, you know, you're asking for a lot to happen. In the next five or six years, none of us will, might be in the chairs that we're sitting in right now and you're leaving the fate of that, that property. To an unknown circumstance, which is really risky.
Can we talk some numbers then? And, you know, ten million sounds like a lot, five million sounds like a lot, what is it and over what time for. Uh, you know, a resident, an average household, can we talk those numbers?
Um, if, if we stated fifteen years for the ten million, it's twenty-five percent tax increase just for that, just for the bond. For the interest and the principal.
That's if the residents pay for everything.
Right, um, and also if it's, um, fifteen, if it's a thirty years, it'll be a fifteen percent if we can get that past. That's five million, you have just. This is interest rates that are estimated, it's, uh, three percent for, um, the thirty year and four percent for the fifteen year. Uh, we self-do well for bid, it'll take like four to six weeks to get real numbers from you, that.
And that's assuming no FEMA funding or anything.
Right, that's the whole ten million dollars, so on the average household, what does that come to?
Um, average household would be, um, three hundred, I believe it was, three hundred dollars a year. For the, for the ten million, for the fifteen.
Was that on an average tax bill or fourteen hundred?
Fourteen hundred, yeah, and then the other ones, uh.
Can we do it for ten million?
Well, I mean, based on the four point eight, the estimated three point two.
And then the sidewall.
And then the side, and the, uh, and the drainage.
Yeah.
We left room in there for the drainage, like a million, million and a half, you know, but now we got this other storm basin thing we gotta deal with, um. You know, I, I, I don't know, I just, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a long-term, it's a long-term conundrum. Um, and right now, we're up against, you know. You know. Uh, is there consensus, do I have any consensus on doing the lower wall?
I, I don't think buying, uh, three, you know, three years with the lower wall. Uh, I, I don't think doing one and not the others is sensible.
Okay, so you're, you're, at this point, we took a vote, you're, you'd be a no. Okay. Cuz if I, if, if we do the lower wall, that, then at least I know I have time to figure something out, but not a lot of time. that, then at least I know I have time to figure something out, but not a lot of time. You know, because that upper, upper wall would have to go in or it doesn't go in and then you are looking at another project that could be a lot more than three point two million.
And again, I'll put the number out there. The numbers you gave us, we're talking twenty-five dollars per month per household for a ten million dollar bond over fifteen years with zero FEMA.
My suggestion is go for a ban first, which is five years. Do your lower wall and then as Joe gets the answers from FEMA and we can always pay some back or, you know, and then go for bond after five years.
What's the percentage rate on that?
Uh, the ban, we got it at one point one five right now, the interest rates are going up, so that's also time, you know.
The other thing is, is if we get, you know, would it, would it, would it, would your position change if you knew we got FEMA funding for the upland project?
Who?
The board, would the board's position change if they knew that we had FEMA funding for the upland project? Which would pay for seventy-five percent of that.
I'm not fully against doing both walls.
I know, but I'm just saying.
With no FEMA funding, you know, we're talking about, you know, taxpayer dollars, which is always in the forefront of my mind is, you know, taking care of that, twenty-five dollars a month is what we're talking about. An increase.
Yeah, well, that alone, you know, there's other issues that we're dealing with, but yes.
There's always other issues, but we're talking about, you know, the ten million, which is the upper and the lower. If it truly is those numbers, which, you know, other than percentage rates varying, um, I don't see twenty-five dollars a month as as something that's, uh, horrible to ask the residents to pay in order to save a fifteen million dollar facility. What we do across the road, you know, the golfers, let's say we handle whichever way we decide to go with the bluff. You know, bring another proposal for the clubhouse as as something new and and.
The clubhouse across the road idea is supposed not just for the golfers.
Well, I I'm just saying, whatever it's for and maybe it's a new restaurant.
If our building drops over that cliff tomorrow, right? A new building will go up to replace the old building at some point in time.
But I'm seeing it as something completely separate. You know, across the road right now is a fancy faded catering facility, a very, very high-end restaurant, which is fantastic, but it's underutilized, but it's a very expensive, it's very high-end. Four of us went to dinner, it was well over four hundred dollars for dinner. Um, if if something wants to be done closer to the the course, that's a little more casual, a little more, you know, user-friendly, that I I just see that as something totally separate. And we, I think we could do both over time.
Have you ever thought about that if it wasn't for this project?
Well, I know, that's what brought it up, but I I don't want something like that to prevent maybe saving the facility and the beach and the road and all that. I'm saying, let's figure out a way to do both and then everybody's happy. We're not, you know, Rebecca has a position, you know, to do none of it, so.
We haven't heard from Bruce.
And we haven't heard from Bruce.
Is he hearing this?
Hey Bruce, if you'd like to speak, please unmute.
Well, I, taking the information in, I'm in favor of supporting, uh, the country club. Um, I don't know what the consensus is, we've, we've talked about this, but we haven't really done a straw poll or anything like that. But, um, you know, we are, we are in a jam. Uh, if we do the bottom first, we're going to lose the price on steel. The problem is, we we escalate the costs, um, by delaying. And, uh, interest rates are not going down either, so.
I guess my, my big thing is that we keep acknowledging in these conversations that the building is underutilized and I I don't disagree with the realtor's value of the building. Um, but, you know, that value to.
Underutilized by the residents.
But.
I just want to clarify that because the members, you know, maybe the members aren't using it as they should, but yes.
Yeah, I I I've tried to reach out to, you know, different folks up there and across the board, I've heard that it's it's underutilized and the the pieces that the members do, uh, do utilize could be moved into smaller facilities, you know, uh, by rebuilding. I I just don't, I don't see the building as having that value to the village. I completely agree that we need to do something, uh, to to secure the roadway. Um, another concern I have is that in my research about, uh, retaining wall projects, these, uh, it does, by by putting a wall up, say, as as we might be planning to do, uh, it will very likely increase the erosion rate to the west. Uh, and so I don't know if we can possibly be looking at lawsuits, uh, or if we're just, you know, if it would be a bad neighbor. No, I I, but I I'm, I'm trying to look in into the next thirty-five years and see, well, what is going to be the effect of this?
I don't think that I could be sued for protecting my property. I mean, I, then I'm going to blame it on the DEC for giving me a permit to do it, I mean, I just do not like it. You you look at the erosion to the west of those ports right now, um, you know, uh, it's already, it's already impacting that that westerly side, um, I think. Uh, did Charmaine send us that drone shot? Charmaine here? She's behind you, oh, hey, did you?
I'm your blind spot.
Did you resend us that drone shot?
I did not yesterday.
Oh, okay.
But I do have it on my phone, so I could send it to Kevin.
Yeah. But she went and took a drone shot of that, you know, because we wanted to actually see more of the the bluff.
Sure.
Um, I think that was just a couple of weeks ago.
Rebecca, um, a couple of years ago, I remember speaking to you, um, because of your, uh, environmental background and all that. You were talking about, you know, wanting to save the block.
Yeah.
So what changed between then and now?
I did more research.
Okay.
Yeah, so I I, you know, and I'm absolutely, you know, looking at this, that I've seen, uh, projects in the past that worked on other locations. And so between then and now, looking closer at this issue at our specifics and then also being able to see, you know, other locations on Long Island in the northeast that have done, uh, that have tried to save their communities, um, and there's a.
By doing the walls, by doing walls?
There there's some that have done walls, there's some that have, uh, done, you know, sand replacement, which I know was discussed with the, on the call of Burujan. Um, and that's not an option for us, but every type of project has become sort of its own money pit. Uh, it, you know, that I found where you you do this and then even on that call, Burujan, you you had asked a really good question, what about, you know, the plantings, yeah, the maintenance of it? Um, and he said, if you don't replant the plantings, if you don't keep it up, then yeah, it's not gonna, you know, it's it's going to start to fail. Um, and so I I, my fear here is that we commit to this wall for the, you know, the series of walls. And it's not ten million, you know, it's it's it, next year, so we need a million dollars to do this, to add that. Um, and, you know, I I don't have the answer to where is the erosion going to stop? Um, I just see that it's, it's continuing. And, uh, for me, you know, looking in my research retreat, uh, has has been the ultimate answer to a lot of communities. It sounds very defeatist, it sounds like we're doing nothing, but it, uh, counterintuitively is an active uh, decision to say we're going to plan for, uh, you know, thirty to fifty years from now when we have six inches of sea level rise uh, and and put our our time and our money into thinking there. Uh, it is, I I agree, I've heard so many residents and and visitors who have great memories at this facility. It's heartbreaking, it's it's an emotional, there's an emotional attachment to the facility.
Best view.
I I don't disagree, I don't disagree. Um, and I'm so happy for the people who have been able to experience that for decade, you know, years, decades here in our village. Um, things are changing in in the in the coming.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a challenge on the table. I I I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to hear more about a facility across the street. I'd like to see, I'd like to see, I'd like to hear more than a, I'd like to get a, and I I don't want to see it on a piece of paper with a pen, I want to see something that looks like it's a viable option. And I need to see it, I need to see it in four or five months, even if it's just conceptual. But I, you know, you're going to have impacts to the golf course, you're going to be moving this, you got to move irrigation, you got to move electric, you got to get sewer approval, you got to get, you know, it's it's a big freaking deal to do that. It's like, uh, you know, and it's a, you just to get, um, you know, by the way, I like waited, uh, fourteen months to get border health approval for Delhi. You know, it is huge when you're talking about building something, it doesn't happen overnight and, you know, you'll never get your number until you go off a bid.
It's make sure it's for your average wage.
It's 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 it's, you know, so it's it's unfortunate, it's really unfortunate that we're at this spot, but, um, you know, but by that time, maybe we'll be able to decide, okay, in twenty twenty seven, you know, when the contract is over, you know, are we phasing out of that building and phasing into a new building? You know, and by twenty twenty-five, you know, maybe you'll have everything you need for approvals, permits in two and a half years to build a new building and then we can make that decision in twenty twenty-five, I can't make that decision today. I have to save what I, I have to, I feel like I have responsibility. Not knowing what Mother Nature is going to do, not knowing the signs, I have a, I I have a responsibility to do my best to save this village asset. And so I I feel, and I feel strongly about that, I I I feel like I can't walk away. I I'm, and I, and and without a plan, that is a logical plan for retreat. That's, 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 that's how I feel.
I agree with a lot of that, which is why I.
What's that?
I agree with a lot of that, which is why I think it's two separate issues. I'm not saying that can't be done, but I think it's a separate, it's a separate issue.
I mean, you know, unfortunately, um, I I I, I don't know, I don't, I, you know, I'd like to see a a solid committee put together. Um, but, you know, you you have members at this impact, you have, you know, and and then the community is going to be asking us very strongly, who's paying for that? You know, right now, because the facility does contribute to the general budget, two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. You know, we have taken a lot of responsibility for that club in the last six, seven years, you know, we have helped with, in a lot of ways with capital improvements when the money wasn't there. Now, great, golf is booming with no tennis membership, um, you know, and I feel committed to bringing back racket sports there and to having, trying my best to make that facility survive and operate the way we've, we've hoped it to envision it operating, it's just, uh, been, it's been tricky.
What responsibility do we have under our current lease to maintain the property around the facility?
If the, uh, well, our, our responsibility is everything around the building, the building is theirs. Um, you know, I told, I had very frank conversation with this guy, Jim. I said, listen, if my community does not support this initiative, you know, you're, you know, and he, you know, you know, he knows, it's it's, Brian, Brian Egan has confirmed that if we don't move forward and we lose this building, it's more or less an act of God and I have no responsibility to contract. However, that doesn't necessarily mean they won't bring something against us or the brizillas that we're hearing from right now or.
No, that's a really valid point.
While they're coming out.
They're already starting, trust me, we're getting the phone calls.
I think we have the best of you. Um, it, uh, I I think that's a, it's a very valid point, uh, I I do see both sides of this. And and like everyone around the table feels, it's not an easy decision. Um, I, one of my other, uh, large factors, and this is that originally, uh, when putting out for a permit to the DEC, we asked for a permit for a much more robust wall.
Yes.
And I I actually would have been more confident with with that project. I know that that the village, you, the village, everyone did everything to go for that project. And the DEC as it stands, uh, would not and will not support a robust project in part because the DEC's standpoint is that, uh, these, the bluffs need to erode to feed the beaches to prevent, you know, even more rapid erosion down the beach. Um, I'm not, you know, that.
I mean, then why give us a fourteen foot wall?
Because it's, because it's not going to do, in 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 my opinion, it's it's less likely to hold up. Uh, it'll still, I don't know if they're calculating, it'll still be trickling sand down, whatever it is, but, um, in my heart of hearts, I I don't have confidence that we're going to get thirty-five years out of this project without a great amount of maintenance because, uh, you know, we're leaving, we're leaving parts of the bluff naked, uh, above the, above the wall, whereas, uh, you know, originally we had submitted for uh, much more terracing, which which does, uh, help to to maintain.
I'm not sure about that, yeah, I'm pretty sure. Well, the tiering should be going all the way to the top at this point, I, you know, I know that there's maybe a bit of a change and we could go to those, to the, uh, plans. Again, if, after Kevin figures out what he's trying to do here.
You want to go back to plans?
No, or were you trying to get your video going?
Two pictures up first.
Oh.
Right, so the plans are calling for erosion.
Let me get the two depression pictures.
The plans call for, I believe, erosion blankets, terracing, corlogs, and then full vegetation.
All the way to the top, right?
But but not fully across.
Four hundred and fifty-four linear feet.
And how far is the wall?
Just about to the end of the.
It goes, the 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 plantings and the 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 steel wall goes only so far, but the rock wall and the plantings continue to be just beyond the four tennis courts.
Can we pull that up again? I don't know if it's changed again.
There's the documents, Joe, what am I pulling up?
Pull up the, uh, progress plans.
Which one?
Probably, uh, the the, the second capitalized one, yeah.
Yeah, right there, the, uh, bid set progress.
The fourth down.
Fourth down. What page?
I think I have to go back. This plan actually is probably not going to show that because this is the upper wall, not the lower wall.
Do you have the lower? Could we, it's on the website. If you go to portjeffweb, portjeff.com slash east east four.
Has there been communication with the properties to the west?
Go to the second bullet, Kevin.
No. But, um, why would I do that?
It's a collaborative.
The guy from the west is already suing us because he's saying that we're causing all his damage already. Meanwhile, he's got tractors on our property.
One, I've had fifth or sixth one.
The bluff.
Which one?
Fifth or sixth image? There we go.
Yeah.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
See, the the steel goes only certain amount of feet, but then the the rock and the planting goes the entire.
That's all, this is all new plantings. All of this here, all of this in the middle, this is the terracing and the corlogs.
What is the difference between, oh, it's right, so the the terracing is only up to a certain point.
Correct.
And then.
And then it's, here, here says seed and plant in the center here. This is plant and they have a bunch of the different names of the plantings here. Here's the corlogs over here. And then obviously this is the sea wall.
I've just seen without full terracing, uh, so so many of these projects, they get planted beautifully and then a storm comes by and you lose, you know, after planting since. I, again, I I would, I would love to be in support of this, like Kathy Anne pointed out, you know, at the beginning, I was very enthusiastic, I love our beaches, I go swimming there during the summer, walking during the winter.
Um, so it's, you know, we we had talked at one point about Montauk Lighthouse and how that that point was actually saved by the, by doing proper plantings and, um, is there a side, can I, is there a, um, a side to, can you scroll one more page? You know, if the planting is done right, plus, um, you know, I'd like to follow up with the G E I on there. Click on that next one, Kevin. And next one. So that shows, well, uh, go back one, so that shows the tiering, the tubing.
Yeah, so so the, the terracing is something that's been proven to be quite effective, though the Montauk Lighthouse is under, has undergone recently or is undergoing, uh, a new, you know, after after thirty, thirty-five years or so, they have to redo the project entirely, uh, again, because because, you know, they, sea levels, you know, rising and so.
You know, and at that point, you know, maybe we will have another facility across the street. You know, I don't, I can't, I, go to the next, uh.
Next slide.
Yep. And it shows the plantings and the, I mean, they really bolstered as much as they could the the types of materials. And by the way, this is the vegetation and, um, this aspect of the plan is probably two million dollars, if not more, of the project.
And what happens if those materials end up in the Long Island Sound? So there's a big storm, is that our responsibility for, you know, if they end up on the beach on the sound, if they get washed out?
Um, I think there's a two-year warranty on the plantings, Joe?
There's a two-year warranty, uh, maintenance warranty on the entire project.
So the four, the four point eight includes all of the.
All of this, yeah.
All of this.
Yeah.
But but my question is, in in seven years, ten years, we get a, the most horrific storm we've seen. And then those, all that material, the the. And then those, all that material, the, the, uh. Yeah.
Corlogs.
Yeah, e- everything that's tied together, you know, and not the plant material, but the, the physical material, is there, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to look at all.
No, I mean, I, Rebecca, again, I, I can't ask these questions, because it's, it's like. You know, I, I have to rely on. This coastal engineer giving me a plan that, you know. I, I don't have anything else to really rely on. Obviously, if there's a disaster, then I would probably go to FEMA and say, hey, this one event. Out my, my friggin' wall, and I'm more likely to get money at that point in time. Than having just some, doing nothing over this, this amount of time. I mean, I think at, at some point. You know, Laura Shornoff did say that we, there must be a maintenance plan in place. That shows that we are, you know, taking care of the slope and the hill. Um, you know, she's working right now, again, with the, uh, people I put her in touch with at Southern University about this. This, this steroid, you know, new magical, I don't know, material, that hopefully it does its job and helps those things take root better. Um, but I, you know, this is where I'm at. I, 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 uh, you know, and we spent, folks. Joe, $350,000 with G E I. At this point, at least.
Rebecca, go back to.
Maybe more, if you take into account everything that came prior.
I know.
When you say, if we get this big storm and everything goes into the water, what is the concern there, the, the money to redo?
No, the, the concern is, uh, fines for, you know, it, I know if the building falls into, you know, falls off the cliff. The village gets a fine, the village has to clean it up off the beach, that's another cost. I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, look down the road, if this thing gets built, uh, what might be the, the costs? You know, incurred to the village, should it, should it fail beyond the, uh, guarantee, the warranty point?
So, I mean, I think these, these are natural products, um, that are being installed, and they are permitted by DEC, so I don't believe there would be any. Liability or obligation by the village.
You're talking about vegetation that.
The corlogs are.
They're coconut fibers.
What?
Right, they're. No, they're not wood. They're fibers. When, um, they're like, uh, they're, they, like a doormat. A core doormat, C O I R, core.
Right.
They're made of like fibers, you know, you see those, the big straw or whatever. They're coconut fibers.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm just, again, just trying to.
I think they're biodegradable.
Yeah, you're trying to get all of the.
The only thing steel.
Risks factors on the table.
Sure, there's a guess of steel that falls into the water, I would imagine, somebody's gotta pick that up.
If that steel is, is pulled out and removed, we have much, much bigger problems.
The day after tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah.
But everything else, I believe, is biodegradable.
So can we revisit the timeline for the upper portion? I think you had said, Joe, the applications for FEMA due June, by June. Um. You know, I, I, I go back to saying, you know, if we get to work, if. We go, get to work on stabilizing the toe and stabilizing the slope. I think that that will help prevent hopefully any up, further upland erosion. I don't know.
And what about the drainage?
It should, it should delay it.
Right, and I would, I would think that maybe we should come to consensus on installing as much French drainage. As we can immediately, and doing some vegetation of the upper upland portion, um, and I think we could probably get some figures from Ursula. What's the name, Hall Smocker on that, and DNF, is it DNF Stone?
D F Stone.
D F Stone? Um, you know, and, you know, if, if we.
Do you have a slide that'll show up closer, courts one through four? Which one?
Court, first courts one through four.
Upland, upland?
Yeah. Like, my concern, my question is, we put, we put the wall in. How long does it take before that? Slope becomes plantable? Because right now, that's slope. Below those tennis courts is almost straight up and down.
So you mean, is that part of your, is that a question as part of phase one?
Yes.
Well, so what happens is, as they're, as they're, as they're stabilizing the toe, they will be adding material. To, 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 to create that.
So the present line on the top is gonna remain pretty much the same?
Well, I'm just, I, you know, I'm saying, uh, there's a chance that it will. I, I can't answer that question, but I, I think that it will prevent. More deterioration than otherwise would happen if we did nothing.
What we have to do, though, is kind of guess, as to how far back we put plantings.
Well, you, we had called for at least 50 feet, right, to come off the, off the top? So, I mean, I would, so one of the, one of the things that if the upper wall goes in. They need to have access to the back of the building, coming from one through four and five and six.
Right.
And even seven and eight. But, um, when we told Verujin that, you know, we had abandoned the tennis program. He felt, you know, having that 50-foot path would be more than enough to get the, uh, equipment back there. Um, so, you know.
Right now, you have about 60 feet to midcourt.
Drone again.
I'm sorry, 60 feet from.
You have about 60 feet.
It don't move.
To the midcourt of the tennis courts.
Right, but you had sent a, uh, a proposal. For, if we had, if we were to do the pickleball courts.
Right.
You needed, with that plan would work off with that 60 feet.
Would work with just half that.
Right, so I, I, my recommendation is to do that today. As part of this, I would do, I would put in, as part of this initial ban, the cost for putting in the pickleball courts. I can't imagine that being. It's asphalt, correct, and fencing?
They gotta put asphalt down, but I'm pretty sure they would have to take out.
So say, does that go on top of the arch?
Yeah, they would have to take out the arch.
But the basis is there.
Well, they would have to compact it to make sure it's.
Do you have, do you have some, we, we checked, they could do that, but they don't, they can't do the asphalt component, but. Cause they do, they do all the drainage and, uh, you know, all that other stuff, but, um, there's a, there's a.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to send out the bay.
Or we can get a, you can get, well, you can get D F Stone to do the under, the underpinning, and then you could bring, uh, Suffolk Asphalt in there on the town list. So you can get a contractor to put down the, uh, if you, if you, you just need asphalt, right, and then you can paint the lines. We can do that for the first year to get a program going, to launch pickleball, and then we can. Make it a lot better, but, um, and I would open up court seven, I would have, we would pay to get seven and eight open for resident use, like I had proposed. You know, anybody wants to join, they can, you know, it should be resident first, if they want to bring a guest, they should have to pay to bring a guest now. For a non-resident to play on those courts, like we had discussed, you know, when we were talking about how to. Come up with a membership, uh, and I, I would, I would advocate that all that revenue goes towards helping to pay for this.
Stan, the net is, um, is that a regular tennis regulation net, or is it just a different kind of net for pickleball?
It's a lower net, it's a little. It's pretty much the same net, all we do is lower it out there a little bit.
You know, um, and that would be, that would be a major gift back to residents that to make this.
That'd be great.
Their, their facility and to get them to be introduced to this building and take advantage of this. I mean, we put a whole fitness center in there, and, you know, nobody even knows it exists, so we have, we have, you know, we have, we have issues, there's no doubt.
How many residents go and pay astronomical amounts for outside gyms, member, gym members? Granted, it's not a giant facility, but there is equipment there that can be used by residents.
Being used a little bit more, but.
Not too expensive.
Should be.
Are those like club members?
And I don't think that, um, I don't think the investment to do that, to get the start of a pickleball program up there. Is anything that would prevent us from being able to do that for the season. Honestly, um.
I think plantings are important to other.
Well, I would do that in conjunction with the French drain behind there. And then you can phase out, once we get the rest of the survey to the west, that could be part, become part of the second phase, if we decide to put the, the steel wall in. At the tennis courts and/or retreat, cause I don't have those answers right now. But I think stabilizing the bluff is important, because it gives us the time. To secure some assets and put a plan together that helps us make a better decision for the upland projects, I don't know.
So why don't we take a poll on the lower, based on what was discussed, the lower and plantings and drainage and. To see where everybody is.
Well, I'm in favor, I'm in favor, I'm in favor of the entire thing right now, so that's my position. And I would, I would agree to do the lower, help us make a decision, a better decision about the upper. You know, because, you know, I, it's, it's, it's not that I disagree, I don't disagree with any of this, but I know that. You know, you're looking at a five, five-year, you, you're looking at five years, so by 2027, you're either gonna have this facility back with a, you know. Hopefully get 20, 25 more years out of it, or you're not looking at this facility and you're looking at a new facility, that's, oh, we're just not there yet.
And again, I, I think, I think your points of view are valid, uh, as well, I just, uh, based on my research and, and gut feeling. But, but I am, I am one of five, so.
Yeah, and, you know, listen.
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna be.
I, yeah.
If this, if this project goes through, I, I just, I, I, and for me, I think. It would, it, I understand the timeframe here, I don't disagree with the timeframe, but I, I do feel very strongly that the residents have not. You know, I, we've been finding social media, uh, we've put something on the village page. But I, I don't know that there's been enough of a public forum to have that input, um. You know, sorry, I, I feel uncomfortable saying yes to this without many more of our residents voicing, you know, letting us know how, how they feel, and or. I, you know, more clearly putting it as a, as a referendum.
I'm not sure what else to put it, how to get it out there. We had it in our newsletter, it's been in the newspaper. This meeting was noticed, and I've been discussing it with a lot of people, putting up articles, you know, all over Facebook.
Newsday, I mean, I haven't talked about this.
It's been everywhere.
I know, and I agree with you too, but, I mean.
I, I think residents are just complacent with it. I don't think they feel strongly, the ones that feel strongly either way have spoken and, you know. Um, I don't disagree with putting it to referendum necessarily, but. Um, the, the people that I've spoken to directly. The first thing out of their mouth is, I don't play golf, I don't care. And then when I explain, well, it's more than golf. It's a facility, it's worth a lot of money, it's the bluff, it's the beach, you know, either way, however you feel, I think people need to get involved, and they're like, you know, how much more is it in my, in my, you know. Out of my paycheck every month, and when it comes down to those low numbers, they're like, whatever, I don't really care. I mean, that's been my experience in talking to people. Whether it's online or in person, or, um, feedback that I'm getting, so, um, lead a horse to water.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and I, you know, it's, we talk to different people, uh, yeah, I've gotten the opposite response of people saying, you know, I, I don't. You know, I, I don't think we should do this and, and to retreat, but again, there, this village, this, as we all know. Everyone will not always agree on everything, um. So, you know, again, if, if we had. If we could put it to referendum, if there was a way to do that, but I, I do acknowledge the, uh, the timeframe here. If the project does move forward, I think not tying the upper wa, uh, you know, trying to get FEMA funding for the upper wall, that less burden on taxpayers. Uh, would be the smart thing to do.
Oh, we fully have it.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, we've been seeking FEMA funding from day one, it's not.
No, but, but if, as it's been laid out, that's essentially the, the, but, much more likely way to receive.
It's pretty much a no, it's tied together.
I can tell you that the, the response that I'm getting is, I'm just turning in favor of doing it. For obvious reasons, because the responses I'm getting are coming from membership.
Of doing what?
The whole thing.
Of doing the whole thing.
Even though that building is not being utilized.
But, uh, yeah, I, I agree that it's not.
And that's a mystery, I don't know why.
And I think that's a discussion I think we have to have with the.
Theories about it.
Yeah, me too.
Because at one time, it was unbelievably, uh, crowded in there every Friday and Saturday night. You've been there on a Friday night now, and you're lucky as the bars for it.
We were there on this past Saturday night, there was plenty of places to park. And the place was empty, I think for the entire time we were there, three, four hours during the dinner hour. Um, the diner was never full, and there was zero turnover, the tables came in, had dinner, and left, and it's, it's a shame.
So, like, when I spoke to Jim from, of T P G, and one of the si, one of the two siblings. You know, he said, they haven't changed the menu yet. Well, they didn't do it from, for la, from last season, because they were, they purchased in the middle of that season. So they said, you know, and I told him, I said, it's too high-end, it's, it's too, you know, the name of the restaurant is the club, doesn't even make itself sound like it's open to the general. Uh, and he said, I said, we need to make it a, a family destination. He said, I love family, I'm willing to talk to you folks, and. You know, we're committed, we want to work together, and, you know, I, I don't, you know, I just feel like we haven't given this new guy. A, a chance to even know who we are, you know what I mean, so, um, and I know, I, listen to me, I know there's been challenges there, I, I. I've, uh, had to, you know, be involved in, in a lot of them, and it's, it's not easy, it's not an easy group, too, they, they want their way, uh. You know, they only want to pay a certain amount or whatever, and they'd rather go bring their own beer on the golf course, and, but I think the membership is also very supportive of the facility. You know, I think they're very, they want, they really want to have a clubhouse, I mean, you know, there's no doubt about that.
Extremely, extremely unhappy with what they're getting for what they're putting in. You know, we, we've held the minimums at 400 this year, according to the contract, it's supposed to be 800.
Yeah.
And if we did the 800, we would have a mass exodus.
I think there needs to be a median of the minds between, they, the, I think the new group, J P G, needs to hear from the membership.
Well, this, uh, this gives us the opportunity to really sit down with them and say, listen, this is, we are at a crossroads, and if we don't. If we don't come together on a program that works for this entire community. You're gonna lose your, you know, this building's going over the cliff in four years, you're gonna lose your entire investment. What'd they pay? They must have paid millions of dollars to buy out the rest. And they, by the way, I also asked them, I said, I hear a rumor that you don't even want the facility, he said, I, we're very much vested in this facility, even was on the call with me, I wish you could back me up, but. We're very much vested, we're booking parties, you know, we want this to work.
They said that when we had our meeting with them.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, but they need to now, they need to now show their commitment to this community, if we take this initial step. That has to be part of this, this process of trying to turn that place around for the community. You know, making it, you know, and listen, we went back for the day of, uh, I had my minimum, G24. Back in 1980, 1978, 79, 1980, I had, my, my, my family had to pay 2,500, $25 a month.
Yeah.
And we went up there, and we've had our, we had our account, and it was a forced minimum every month.
Yep.
To make that, and there was, you know, now we're asking for $25 a month, what? 47 years later, to, to try and stabilize a facility that, you know, you go up there and you have two martinis, you, you're at $25 a month, you know?
And a half.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you know, there's all sorts of things that can happen, um, that could be different. I just, you know, I don't have those answers right now, I'm, I'm looking at this, and this is.
The small picture is the tennis courts, I know that.
What do you mean, this, the small picture?
Well, based upon the big picture, the tennis end of it is a small piece.
Yeah. We need to get that French drain in.
I don't see why we can't have it all back. You know, I'm gonna shoot for the moon, and say, we can bring tennis back, it might not look the same, but it's gonna be smaller, I think pickleball could be there, I think we can work with the J P G group to make that facility. You know, a great place for everybody to be in, and hear everybody's concerns and get it going. In five years, when the contract is up, let's look at it, in the meantime, do some work, some, uh, homework and legwork on. You know, what could the, the turn be, and if that looks like something, we can move ahead with that later on. I don't see why it all can't be done in some form. Maybe not exactly the way we're seeing it now, but, um, and everybody gets a little peace and everybody's happy. That's my take. And I'm, I'm in favor of definitely the lower wall.
Joe, what was the timeline on the, um, the drainage from Steve?
He should have it designed to us by Wednesday.
Okay.
And then we have a week conversation.
A week? Okay.
We'll share that with D F Stone, D F Stone will give us pricing.
Yeah.
For installation.
Okay.
And go from there.
Um, did, and did you send him the, what, uh, the upland?
Did I send Steve?
Yeah, did you?
I have to send that immediately after this meeting.
Right, as if he know, like, so, and can we go to that one side again for the upper walls, Kevin, I'm sorry, because those two wings. Um, they're not.
This?
Uh, no, it's, it's one of the engineer plans.
Upper wall?
It's, uh, there it is, that, that wing that cuts in on the westerly side, I'm sorry, the easterly side, I apologize, of the building, through courts five and six. That, we had looked at a, another plan, Joe, um, earlier, when we, and Stan, I think you were on that call. With us, where that wall was not cutting back that deep, and they had said that that's an option, you don't have to go that far back. But because if we can demonstrate that we're putting proper drainage in there, you know, that might, that might alleviate a lot of the erosion issue.
Would this wall, is it cleaving off, uh, the, the edge there and making a new slope from it?
I'm, I'm not sure, I don't understand what you mean.
So the wall is where there's currently flat upland?
Yeah, cause it's gonna be pounded in like a, you know, to protect it.
So then, so then anything north of the wall, that becomes part of the slope? So then, so then anything north of the wall, that becomes part of the slope?
No, it's, it's, no, no, it's, it's not, it's not gonna, it's gonna be pounded into the dirt. So it's gonna retain the dirt. The wall below retain, helps retain the dirt on the north side of the wall.
Sure.
And that, that wall helps stabilize everything on the south wall, side of wall. So what Farujian says, these two walls act to stabilize together.
Right.
You know, so that it, it bolsters everything in place.
So what you're saying is if the lower wall fails, nothing will fail whatsoever.
That, that too, yes. Uh, no, I, I, I'm just trying to get a visual of it. Um, I don't see how you pound the wall into a very, uh, delicate, you know, already.
Oh, they've taken soil samples.
Sure, 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 sure. No, I, I, I will never claim to be an engineer.
No, no, that was one of the first things. That, again, these, these are some of the things that, why these things take time? It's because they took soil samples. Um, that was the first thing they did. I think they did that back in October, September. Um, you know, then we had to wait for this, the topography map to be done again. And, you know, it, it just keeps, it, it's just like this unraveling. Uh, and I, Rebecca, honestly, if they had, if they advised us to put a wall into sand, maybe I threw their pants off, you know, basically, you know?
Joe, maybe get a. Kevin, can you go to, um, slide there? Keep going.
There's three slides on that.
Can you pull up? It may not be in the set. Um, let me see what we have. Um.
This.
Moving fast.
Try the upper wall right there, the, uh, nearest A D E C.
That's the one that has three slides.
What about the progress plans?
What do you want above it?
That one?
Yeah, let me, can you scroll? I just wanna, I wanna see the, uh. Right there. All right, so this is a potential add-on.
Right.
This piece here. I have to find out from Farujian if he can bring this back a little bit further.
Yeah, I think.
I thought he said that he didn't think it was wise, and that's why they brought it, uh, to the location that it currently exists. Which means if the two cannot figure out a way to get the, um, trench drain through here, that trench drain will probably have to come through here somehow.
And is the upper wall, I don't think as it is, it's doing anything to protect the upper roadway. I know that the lower wall will be tied into the, the ramp.
Correct. So if you go back to the prior slide, Kevin, we'll see that the ramp is being extended. The sea wall in front of the ramp is, uh, they're adding to it. And then obviously in that corner, Kevin, go to the, the prior.
Just tell me where to stop. That's the beginning.
No, go to the, yeah, go to the next set of plans. Yes, it's not the set of plans, it's the other set of plans.
The, the three?
Ones with the three.
The lower set.
The one with the three.
If you go back to the website.
Yeah, go back to the website.
Pull up the second.
Sorry.
East Beach.
You could go, here we go. So the ramp is going to be extended here. They're extending the sea wall in front of the ramp. And then they are creating here in that, that little corner is where the sea wall is going to start on the side. So that, this whole section here will protect the roadway going to the beach.
The, the other concerning thing that Farujian had said was something about, you might start seeing the water creeping in on either side of the upper wall. Which didn't make any sense to me. I tried to clarify with this. He said, you know, he said that the erosion, wherever you don't put the upper wall, you might continue to see erosion to the east or the west of it. And to the east of where we're proposing the wall is our roadway, which is something that I think many residents do feel very passionately about preserving access, roadway access to the beach.
Right. I think, I, I, I think that that's why I think they need to weigh in on the drainage plan. Because I don't, I don't know if they're actually talking at this point together about the best drainage plan. But when we walked out with Steve, um, if you go back to the, uh, I'm sorry, the aerial, Kevin, I apologize for.
Which one?
The aerial.
With, with the bands or the one that I'm showing you?
Uh, the map.
You're talking about Rebecca.
The map, yeah.
It'll eventually be.
If you roll that up.
Right.
I don't think that's your main concern, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but, but.
It's only gonna be protected where the walls are.
Right. But you're gonna, you're gonna have a, if we do the lower wall and we do a proper drainage plan, you have a lot of material or land to the east of courts five and six that should, we, you know, if we, if we manage the stormwater runoff and collect it better at the top of the hill and deflect it back actually, because that's what the drainage plan that Ursulino is gonna be developing. You know, we're doing a lot to prevent any more water spilling over. And I, I think the water spilling over is really a big significant cause of the acceleration of the deterioration of the bluff. I mean, you can see that line right behind court six. We, we, we gotta block that water at the top, trap it and prevent it from going over. And I think that that will, in addition to the wall, prevent a lot of that erosion from chipping away on, on the, on the north side of that, that upland wall, Rebecca, right? So I think we need to vegetate. And, uh, as we have said, we need to vegetate and add more drainage up there.
Right. And you see here, Rebecca, this is a current image. So that sea wall is going to come all the way around to protect this corner.
Right, right. Yeah, I just, I, I, again, not, I don't know if anyone said with any certainty why the established trees and, and, uh, you know, planting, but the, the natural, uh, buffer that we've had has, has been eroding other than the, the, uh, sloughing and the,
Well, so.
And the toe of your wall.
I think we heard that the last thing you want to plant on a slope is a tree.
Sure.
Because, you know, when the wind is blowing, I think that that's causing a lot of the uprooting and the sliding of those sections of land. So, uh, we won't be planting any more trees up there, that's for sure. We may be planting trees on the upper part. I, I don't know. I'm not the expert. I need to know. We need to know what's the best thing to plant on the upland portion to help prevent the water from going over the top. I mean, that's, I, you know, that's another. Um, it's interesting, because I want to show you guys a picture, and I, I hope I find it, of, of what the bluff used to look like.
Oh, someone shared this and it was remarkable. Well, I mean, there, there's, there are areas elsewhere on, on this cliff that are still, still have all their trees and shrubs and, you know, again, having Mount Sinai Harbor there, uh, is, it's a disruption to the natural feeding of this area.
No, this one.
For the town.
That's, that's a picture from the seventies. We passed that to Stan. It shows the bathhouse.
I loved it.
Shows the bathhouse. And that's the, that's the bluff to the left of the bathhouse or to the east of the bathhouse. There's no vegetation on that slope whatsoever. And that's like, gotta be from the seventies. And I think that the problem is we've let these trees grow and they're the worst thing that could grow on a bluff.
And trees.
Well, I mean, you know. Right? Isn't that an interesting picture? Because why, why didn't that hill go down? I, I can't answer these questions, you know?
That's, it's all.
Yeah. Sure, to Joe.
Well, but I guess.
I think that's from the seventies. I found it on our archives.
It's all full of trees.
It's recorded now. I know.
And it was protected by the parking lot.
We live screen?
Yeah. And, and, and all that. Yeah, there, yeah, there's less, less.
That's a big difference.
Right, isn't that an interesting picture? I'll send it, I'll send it to, uh, I'll, I'll send it to.
Kevin, so you can share it? Is Bruce, Bruce? That's a picture from the seventies.
And so you see that that speech.
It went to breakfast.
The bluff had no trees on it.
You probably don't know, but did that come naturally or was that someone's plan?
No idea.
To re-vegetate that area. Well.
Let me send this to.
Part of the reason.
Let me send this to.
Anywhere you want, yeah.
Are birds. What are they, are frogs? Right, Rebecca?
Yeah, that's true. That is true.
I just sent you this image.
So we should get more birds.
Well, I don't know if we want trees. They're saying that's a.
No, no, it's, it's true, it's true. No, it's, but, uh, grasses and trees.
Okay, so I think, uh, I think we have, I think we have, I feel like we're getting closer to a plan. I think so. To approve the lower wall, go for ban. Uh, this does not, by the way, this does not impact our budget till the next budget year.
Correct.
So we have a year to work on eliminating the impacts to the residents. And so hence, you know, we, we will share some of that plan when we do our budget workshop.
Right. These numbers are the worst case.
Right.
Without mitigation or FEMA or.
Right. And that gives us time to get the, you know, get our upland drainage. Um, and, uh, you like said, four to six weeks?
Four to six weeks to get the money. I mean, we could start, listen, and then.
No, I understand that, but you have to advertise. So we have to kind, we have to kind of figure out the four point eight plus money for the drainage.
Okay.
And then we, we have some work to do. Because I don't have the rest of those answers right now, but.
On the agenda for vote for Monday would be to award the bid.
Correct.
I'm sure this has come up and probably because we're in contract already, it's locked in, but there's no asking the, the vendor that's there who's, you know, gonna be making the money off of this property to chip in.
Yeah, that, that could be definitely part of the phase two. I think that could be part of the, you know, the continuing way is try to solve the, the rest of this issue. Yeah.
The financial.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, because again, if we don't, if we don't secure that upland, he's gonna lose his contract in four, he's gonna lose that facility in four years. You know, that's a lot of investment for him.
And a lot can happen in four years. He may want to continue, he may not want to continue.
No, I know, but he's not gonna, he has gotta make that decision.
Right.
Probably, I'm gonna say, within the next ten months. I don't know, I don't know. Certainly, we have no lo- more than a year to make that next decision.
I think letting him know what our plan is is gonna be helpful to him.
Well.
But the contract is up in five years anyway, so.
Right. Twenty twenty-seven, which is soon, in my opinion.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna blink.
Yeah, so that might be, that might be enough time to give us a plan to retreat. But, you know, if we don't do anything, I can't see how we do anything up there right now. And we still need to secure the road.
I just, I appreciate the space to all voice our, our points of view and have this conversation.
Yeah, I, um, it's important that we do that. Um, I'd like to also, uh, stay in the country club budget. Do we have, uh, any numbers in there for tennis? Yeah, no, so you had no money in there to open up the tennis courts?
No, because that's minimal anyway.
Right, for, for just doing seven and eight.
It's twenty thousand to eight courts, so.
Right, right, right. Well, if we want to do the drainage as soon as possible, we may just have to keep seven and eight unplayable. I have to figure out how they get this drainage done. They're probably gonna be coming in that back gateway. But we can also then just look at pricing out on the pickleball, getting four pickleball courts installed up there on one through four. I don't see why the, the caterers not using that area at all, correct?
Not using it at all.
Which, which areas are?
Courts one through four.
And what was the area, Joe, that you were referencing? An area south of the, are you referring for ceremonies? Um, you, you referenced the area south of the building for the, for the vendor to use on the property?
Well, I, I had talked to Michael about that. They can, they can come over and use the area around the scoreboard.
Okay.
The patio.
Yeah, on the patio or between the patio and the eighteenth and ninth green. They just give us notice that they're gonna be coming over and take board wraps and.
Isn't it, is the membership aware of that?
Access behind.
Is the membership aware of that?
We have a fence up.
No, I know, we are.
I mean, is that distracted? Is that, because I had, when I.
They actually, they've actually there a few years.
Okay, because when I was on the phone with them, we had offered them one through four to have their wedding ceremonies because they still have water view, you know, you don't want it.
That's pretty out there. I mean, the water, the view.
They have the deck.
I know, they, I know.
That was a question.
I guess that the deck is set up for.
I think I have to move that back deck to put that properly on it once we get to that.
As of now, no. Again, it's long ahead.
It's close.
What was that question?
The more real estate that's lost.
Do we have to remove the deck to put a wall?
That is close. I was up there yesterday. It, it's, it is close.
I don't either.
And what was your answer, Joe? Did they remove the deck?
They do not.
Did they? As of now, no. The more real estate we lose, that could change. Because they're going to be bringing, if, if they do install the upper wall, they're going to be using both sides, both courts for staging and construction. So they're gonna have a crane coming in here and basically lifting over.
Yeah.
And drilling in the she piles, and then they'll come on this side and finish it off over here.
And as they pound in that wall, they can get a little bit closer and closer to the center.
Right. They cannot bring the heavy equipment behind.
They're working their work up a much.
Or else it will end up on the.
Well, and that's one of the things, I mean, if we're gonna go pickleball, I wanna make sure that the fifty to sixty feet is enough for them to bring heavy equipment.
I already have.
This year.
Sure.
As opposed to coming through this way.
Just so I understand, the pickleball is proposed for the sou- southern half of that court area in addition to the, the dirt area there?
No, no.
No, just other courts.
What's going on with the dirt area?
Right now, surveying it.
How many pickleball courts can you get on the current courts?
If we did them all, we could put seven on there.
No, now. Like, you put seven right now?
You could put seven. You can fit seven pickleball courts in this fence, this fence.
Oh, wow.
These are, these are pickleball courts that are under. You don't have the tennis courts under. These are pickleball courts.
What's that?
No, that's an aerial, an aerial view.
Right.
Of the, of the current.
So the, the midline is right here. The tennis nets are right here. So from here to here, and from here to here, you can fit seven pickleball courts.
North, south?
Yeah.
They're north, south. This way.
Well, that's great.
They're only twenty feet wide. They require, uh, ten feet between each court.
So how do we make that happen? Do we need to vote on that Monday? Or do we just?
I would recommend putting in the four so that you can do vegetation on both sides.
Right. And we need access, but we gotta maintain access for this equipment.
That's.
Right, so that, you know.
That could be a problem because you don't wanna bring the equipment in.
Well, that fence, you can't bring it in over here. We, we would, I, I would assume we will propose a new fence.
Right.
Right, a new fence over right across here.
Right. And then we, this would just come down and remain open.
Right.
Until they're done.
Right. And then we can re-vegetate this.
They would have to come in as close to the centerline as they, they don't wanna get down in here.
Right. That's why I wanna make sure that the fifty or sixty feet is adequate for the machinery that they would be bringing in before we move forward.
Yeah, I, I, I believe we already addressed that with Farujian. He said that was more than enough.
It's exact, exactly fifty.
Farujian's the engineer. I told to the contractor.
Yeah. I understand, I would, if, if and when we do that, I would, I would want those to not, to be more, uh, easterly than westerly. So if, for instance, if you had to leave all of court four open for heavy equipment to come in and then get to the northerly section that going around, you know, I mean, I think if we do four to start, I mean, that would be great.
As far as the engineers' warranty goes, since it's two years, is there no way?
Contractor.
The contractor warranty, okay. Um, I know architects, for example, have a, you know, they have to carry lifetime insurance because they could build something in, you know, twenty twenty-two, and if they're still alive in twenty fifty and something goes wrong and it's determined that it was the architect's fault, they can get sued. I'm not looking to be a litigious go-after-everyone village, but if we're told, you know, if we're told that this is gonna last up to thirty-five years and it lasts five, is there?
Yeah.
I think it would depend on what the cause was. So.
But any weather would, is act of God, you know, it's, is there?
Right. So once they, once the contract is awarded, they're going to have to provide us with their insurance based off the insurance requirements for the project, the performance bond. Once the project is done, they'll have to provide us with a maintenance bond, uh, which will be two years. Beyond that, if there's. Once the project is done, they'll have to provide us with a maintenance bond, uh, which will be two years, beyond that, if there's, um, any defect or anything or negligence, uh, based on their part, then, uh, so we could file a lawsuit, but if it is a natural occurrence, uh, they will not be responsible for.
And, and the, and this goes for the engineers as well, the, the group giving us the plans to say that.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to show that it was a defective design.
Right, sure, sure.
Kind of D E C permit, so it's, that would be really kinda hard to. You know, and by the way, that's why I had him say that. That's why I pinned Vruch on that question about, you know, if we do the lower wall and the upper wall, what am I looking at, he said, because he said, originally he said fifty, and then he scaled it back to maybe, you know, thirty-five, and I still think thirty-five is, you know, he said twenty, I, I like that number, but thirty-five is a pretty decent number. But I, and again, oh no, it'd have to be like a superstorm, and that happens, we are, we have nothing.
Well, then we probably, we probably have a lot of other issues too.
Yeah, we have nothing left.
What, then we have FEMA.
Yeah, but maybe you're looking at, you know, huge numbers.
Oh, yeah.
So we don't have a beach, basically.
Number one is the lower wall.
Yep. And drainage.
Number two would be drainage.
I would couple drainage with, I would, if we have to go for ban, I would couple the, and I, I estimated a number for drainage in with, against the, plus the four point eight, and just leave out the, you know, the, you know, whatever, three point five for the upland. You understand?
Yeah, I do.
So drainage and mower together.
Drainage and mower together.
Because I think.
Because it'll slow the upper deteriorating.
I think we had, uh, we had about one point seven left for drainage and vegetation, when we said ten, we knew we already have a number of five for the, for the toe wall, and then we estimated it based on what we were, what the engineers were telling us we would need for the upland drainage and wall, and again, I, I think that that top wall, uh, Joe, do we, when we met with them online, and I think Sandy were there that day, I think that three point two number that they gave us included that length of wall that went across one through four.
Right.
So I don't, I'm not convinced I need to do a wall of, a steel wall behind one through four. Well, I know, but I was, I'm saying, you know, if we, even if you wanted to buy ten years or fifteen years, and you just did a small wall around the building, you know, um, and they were, they said they were gonna add those two flags as add-ons, depending on how the bids came in, you know? So, that, yep, well, it might be two and a half, I had no idea. Until we go to bid, and God knows what, still we'll be at that point in time, and I think, I think the upland, you know, in order to get the real numbers, the upland concept plan needs to go to bid, because then you're gonna have a real number to figure out, like, are, you know, if we, this is that real number, now what's the cost of retreat, retreating the building? That's why I kinda have to have a, a conceptual idea of what that other building would look like. I think we need to, you know, to get, I'd like to have, uh, you know, more thoughts on getting a, a group together to, to work on that aggressively, you know?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to work on that. Getting residents, members.
Like, which bar?
Hey, you, you know, I, I'm a glutton for punishment.
Fans of ones, we need this.
Actually, an interesting picture, look at the, uh, the shadow that is cast on the sand from the upper area, the trees and all.
And is Bruce still with us? Okay, so, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a resolution together. And Joe, you're gonna work with, um, Steve, and try and get it, and D F Stone, try and get an idea, just their best professional guess, because then we have to go, we have to give a number for the ban. Again, a ban is a bond anticipation note, you could roll it over five years until you, you, you know, uh, merge it or roll it into a bond for a longer term payout.
And you can pay off every year, you can pay some off, or you could add to it.
Right.
So in five years, you might have some kind of idea. And then roll over whatever's left, and then roll it to the bottom, and then hopefully we'll get there.
And then we're gonna, we're gonna divvy up some tasks to, to tackle what's, how up, upland is, is, uh, gonna take place for this year, we're in March second. Oh, May, June. I'm gonna try and get there. Of course, it's opening, those guys are gonna be out there enjoying themselves. No, I, I, I think they're gonna use, I think we need to use seven and eight to access and build the drainage right now, which that's more important, stabilizing that area right now than not. Questions, concerns, complaints? Since you guys suffered through this two hours.
What do you expect to hear from D E C on the, uh, non-jurisdictional?
Good, good, good question.
We, we did receive, and they requested some additional information.
Okay.
Including, uh, an updated topographic survey. So once we get this, this week, that'll be sent over, and G E I is working on the other interior for us.
Do you feel confident that D E C is going to give you permits for this first phase, including the drainage and then the sheet piling?
So we already have permits for the toe, and the drainage is outside of the jurisdiction, so we don't need permits from them.
So, yeah, the whole, the whole toe wall was what, it took us three and a half years to get the D E C permit. We got it in April, and then we got the Army Corps in September, and that's why we could put the bottom portion out to bid. Um, I'm gonna tell you right now, if D E C claims that we're in their jurisdiction on the upland, guess what, we're retreating folks.
Yep.
I mean, these are the types of things that you have to kinda, it's like a big massive chessboard.
Oh, completely, that's a good way to put it.
Right, I mean, because there's no way I'm gonna wait to get a D E C permit for that, right?
And that's why we, that's why we need that, um, jurisdictional matter resolved now, before we lose more and wind up being in there.
Right, and I'm glad they responded as quickly as they did, because they must know that, you know. They, I think they see that sense of urgency, and, uh, what's his name, um? Chuck has been really, really helpful, right?
One other thing to consider, I'll just throw it out there, because in thirty-five years, there's gonna be a lot of technology developed for, um, shoring up erosion concerns, and that's where Stony Brook is right now, with the faculty members working with the Army Corps of Engineers and, uh, D O D to, um, test this new technology that they've developed that, uh, is currently being piloted in Mississippi and Louisiana to shore up the riverbeds that had been eroded after major winter storms. And this is, uh, this is a compound that is stronger than concrete, but it's, it's natural. It's made out of organic, uh, uh, components.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Uh, as, as.
Stuff that they're talking to G E I about right now.
Oh, God, that would be awesome.
Sorry, as we've already, there's some unknown, unknowns and, and known unknowns, you know, that could be, that could be a huge help for uh, communities like ours, uh, you know, across the country, across the world. Yeah, but, but until it's, you know, proven.
Yeah, there's a lot of time.
Sure.
To learn, and one other thing, the, the blocks when the village acquired the country club in nineteen seventy-eight, one of the first things the village did was to, um, plant and to shore up all the blocks.
Can you show the pictures? Can you show the picture I sent?
I never got it.
I never got it, I, I airdropped it to you.
It was on this phone.
Oh, it's on my Mac.
Oh.
Well, you saw my Mac?
I saw the airdrop come on it.
Oh, so it's on a phone that's recording, can you text it?
Sure, you, you want me to email it to you?
Yes. It's sitting up on his phone.
Sorry, which address, K, K Wood?
Yeah, K Wood, Fort Jeff.
I'm sorry, Alex.
Check your phone, please.
Take this picture, you can see the data of the cars. You see some terracing at the top, but you do not see any, you see very little, maybe you see some plugs for, for planting, but you know, it's proof that you can do something, and it's to stabilize it, right? But as Rebecca said, it was also protected by parking lot. But that's barren, right? I mean, that is just sand.
So if you put a parking lot on the other side, you save a lot.
Yeah. All sand. Yeah.
Look, look Cove at, uh, Pirates Cove, that's, that's been eroding.
Well, yeah, but it's.
Still there. Well, there, everything's there.
But I think that's a seventies picture, does that look like a seventies picture? Yeah, because I think the, uh, the, the, uh, we, uh, I think that bathhouse was built in sixty-eight. Remember when we had the first flood, we got FEMA money for the bathhouse flooding.
In the seventies, there was a, there was like a circle.
Yeah.
If you go there today.
Well, you have to swear, I'm right for you.
Yes.
Yeah, true, that's on the, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it kinda looks like a circle somewhere.
What's that say?
If you go there today, you can see that house.
Right, right.
There's so much sure, trees and vegetation that's really.
Or is it just that it fell?
No, just kidding, yeah. All right, have you guys, um, just so that you know.
Thank you.
You, you're welcome, thank you. We did have a follow-up session with the vendor that provided the, uh, concession, um, they're like, you guys can have this, it's, it's a hundred thousand degrees down there, the kitchen is minute, um, and a multitude of challenges, and it's really, really just, it's literally a snack bar, it is not, you know, it's a challenge for, for, you know, for anybody to really make a go there, but, um, we wanna put the R F P back out, we'll put the R F P back out, um, but, uh, you know, they said they need maybe money one or two weeks. One was the Fourth of July weekend, when.
I don't know, maybe just a food truck. Yeah, I mean, that, that's what I originally suggested, uh, you know, having food truck, because they are self-contained, you could switch it up.
I've got some high-end vending machines.
That was one of the. That's what food truck is. That was one of the bids.
You don't have to come and go.
One of the bids was, one of the bids was a, that concept. It was a standard.
We revisit that, we put the R F P back, uh, when Barbara comes back next week, Joe, can you ask her to put that on her radar? It's nice to have refreshments down the beach.
Can the R F P include a food truck?
Sure, I don't think we eliminated that.
Um, I don't know that.
I think we were just trying to.
No, no food trucks answered, so. I, yeah, I don't know that it seemed appropriate, uh, for them to answer, because it was for the building, but, yeah, well, it, I'll get back in touch with the, there was a guy in a familiar place, uh, who's starting a food truck, uh, app company sort of thing, to make sure, you know, to say this food truck will be here, here, here.
Yeah, one, one of the things that, um, the residents complained about was the lack of consistency.
Right.
Of, of the vendor being open, but she was like, listen, we have one customer, my son is like, it's a hundred and ten in the kitchen, he's having heat stroke.
Right.
We have to go home today.
Well, there's, and there's not many people on this beach, unfortunately.
No, I know.
Most of them are west, everybody got trained to go to west.
But a vending machine may solve that problem, because you fill it when it's empty.
And the wall, because there's not a lot of access from the park, there's no access from the parking lots.
Christian Newbert.
Christian Newbert was the vending.
Yeah.
Or you're letting the food truck from only during lunchtime, you know?
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's a combination, maybe it's vending machines and a food truck.
Yeah.
So the vending machines can supply the cold beverages and the, and cava.
Bowls tasting stuff.
I'm gonna go try it.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Soon, yeah, I need some now.
And all the things goes away.
You might be hooked. My tongue will get numb?
Correct. Oh, God. What's that?
They won't ask me. I need my tongue to be numb for a little while. Gula, gula, yeah, I don't, by stepping on it.
You need your knees.
I do need my knees, all right.
Get a vote on anything or a straw poll?
Straw poll for moving forward with the lower wall and drainage. It's okay.
What is that?
No, I, I really appreciate the.
Yes.
Meeting, this conversation.
So it'll, I'm gonna, we're gonna put a resolution together, uh, Bruce, for the, the board meeting, so we can hold the price of steel and, uh, just importantly, as I said, it's an eight, eight-month timeline, we wanna get to the point where the plantings are going in the ground for fall, and the contractor said he would be able to work with us to keep east, east end of the beach accessible for some residents, it's a massive project, guys.
I'm gonna put Joe in touch with Elizabeth, uh, the, the meeting, uh, that was misplugged, with Stephen, and then with the, uh, with the granting agency that really looks at remediation of projects, uh, close to the water, and they are our grants for, uh, taking, uh, you know, say the tennis courts and turning them back into, uh, habitat-esque areas, so that could be good funding too.
Yeah, anything we could do to make it, I can't, you know, preserve our level of recreation and the assets we have, but to be continued, and I appreciate your time today, really do.